I'm gonna wait till nine and watch this.
I want to get people.
Oh, no, I'm fine with it. I'm just like, you know, that's what I'm.
No, I don't. That's why I did that.
I don't think anyone's gonna call us off.
Say again?
I don't think anyone's gonna call us off that we adjourned a few minutes.
No. We're gonna have to do it again.
I have to read the meeting.
We're all set.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm gonna wait till seven. It says, what if we notice? I got six fifty-eight.
Do you want?
Yeah.
He is.
Where?
Up in there.
In, um.
Yeah.
He's in the hall. A mineral.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And just stand there and listen. You're just a, um, black thing.
That's what they're doing on this one, too. All right, I am recalling the village board of trustees meeting for order for April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. A roll call, please.
Trustee Brochus?
Here.
Trustee Susius?
Here.
Trustee Brunner? Trustee Kowalkowski?
Here.
Trustee Herman?
Present.
Trustee Calvert?
Here.
President Lanko?
Here. The Stanford Presidential Review. Like, what is it, since it's by the United States of America? Clearly, all of the courses stands, one nation, under God, universal. Right, Brad, public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone who addressed the village board on any issue, please observe the time frame of three minutes. Well, the village board incurred his input from residents that may not discuss or have any issue that does not do it, nor is on your agenda.
I did not have anyone sign up for public comments, but I do want to acknowledge that we can switch over, but at some o'clock, so. Uh, I don't know if you wanted to leave a little bit of time to ask if anyone on the Zoom virtual or anybody in the room would like to register this.
That's fine. Does anybody on Zoom would like to make a comment at this time? All right. Would anybody here in the room like to make a comment at this time? All right. You will go to the consent agenda. On request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Bill, I'd like to pull up.
One second.
No, I just.
Yeah, hang on. Let me just make a motion. All right, does anybody, Michael?
Can I just ask a quick question on twelve and up?
Okay, let's get a motion then. If you don't want to pull, let's get a motion in a second and then under discussion.
Sounds good.
Okay, Judy, did you make a motion? All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have a motion in a second to approve the time to generate where a lot of being removed discussion?
Uh, I just have a quick question on twelve. This was concerning the Johnson and Block, the Public Service Commission water rate. After this is approved, what would be the next steps concerning this?
Yeah, so this is an engagement letter for them to do a forecast financing. Financing, uh, at that, once they do, uh, complete that forecast, and then we'll start to put together their application. Uh, and at that point, that will make an application of for the village force review.
Okay, yeah, comes back to us before it's submitted. We get to review it. Okay, just wanted that. This was just wondering.
No, that's because I have, oh, is that gonna have a dollar amount tied to it?
In the application?
No, in the part that we're approving right now.
It does, yes. I believe, uh, not to exceed number is ninety-four.
No, I guess what I'm asking is, are they going to put? Uh, like, any, uh, costs that they're gonna be bringing to the PFC? PSC. This is just to say we are hiring them to look at the numbers they're gonna bring back, and then we fill in the application.
Correct.
Okay, we got dollars in there just to pick what we're gonna pay them to do the work. Gotcha, okay, so, go ahead, Michael.
Does their report then, will they say these are the rate increases that we're recommending to the PSC? Is it that specific or not?
So, what they'll do is they'll deal with an assessment, a financial assessment on, uh, the cost art to the totally, how many, what rate structure it takes to pay back that based on, uh, a payback plan. There are things like rate of return, um, you know, what, what does the bill, what does the bill or feel like is proper according to PSC maximums? Uh, things we'll talk about are, uh, public, uh, the public hearing, when to set that. Uh, and then, once the application is submitted, it's basically, and the PSC's hands to do the help. And they'll, they'll draft a tariff at that time. Um, they'll come back and then we'll.
But I just want, Michael, I think that I haven't said that, when they bring this back, it's just recommendations and we have a discussion on it. And then they fill the application in.
Yeah.
All right, I, I hear what you're saying, I just hope. Okay, any other discussion? All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. All, all the polls. Same? All right. Going to, uh, report a village officer. I'll make mine quick. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're gonna run, uh, the meetings like we've done in past years. Kind of, you know, hand up, and then all I need, so you recognize, we're going to try to maintain, um. Getting out of here by ten o'clock, so that may mean we'll be moving some items. Uh, example, Bill and I moved a number of items off tonight's agenda. We're not gonna start anything after ten o'clock, we'll move those. We have a meeting May thirteenth. That's gonna be a full meeting, even though it was a special meeting for the SRO position. Uh, we are gonna add things to it, so that's gonna be a, basically, a general, uh, meeting, because May's meeting is already very full. And I am concerned of how late it's going to be, so. We're going to implement the stuff we talked about earlier this year. The other thing is, Bill and I are going to try to make it clear on general business on what we're gonna to need or what we're gonna be looking for. We've been doing a lot of discussion and action. That may not be the case. It may be just a presentation where it's just an educational thing. It may be, uh, just a discussion, and we're not going to do any action until later on, or we were, so we're gonna try to define things and have the information. There, so we like, of the report will be three parts. It'll be what it is, the justification or purpose of it, and then the, the direct and indirect cost of it. That's kind of how we're gonna run it, so you'll get that ahead of time, and we should be able to get through some of these topics much quicker by doing that. You know, one of the suggestions, and that's what staff has been also instructed to do. The other thing I wanna cover is the role of trustees on committees, as you know, you guys are the chairperson of those committees. It's important that, uh, when things come out of your committee, that it has those three sections covered. Or a lot of you kicking it back. We wanna make sure that things are all nice and, uh, ready for us, so. You just have to do decisions that need be, or get educated on it, so. Try to keep that in mind on these committees, and also, try to also keep the big picture that we can't buy everything, you know, on every committee. Not that we're trying to favor one or the other, but trying to keep the perspective of, okay, if we do spend the money on this, we really like, we might not have the money to do this, this and that, so. Just trying to keep that, the committees are involved in that. Uh, that is all I wanted to say. Judy?
Um, just a reminder, this weekend is twelve days for everybody. A lot of the brat sales are starting on Thursday, I believe, but there's gonna be a band, I believe, on it, in the area, Xavier Park, and, um. The Lions are having the brat sales around, and I think there's other events. It's all on Facebook and Social Media, so, and then I'll cite this one, welcome Andy and Doug. Doug, it's your welcome.
Okay, village administrator, Bill.
Why don't you allow the trustees first here?
Oh, I'm sorry, any other trustee on, thank you. All right.
Yeah, yeah, email here, Doug. Uh, couldn't be here with us tonight, but he did write an email, and wanted me to read the emails about college four and to the poll. Uh, he says, I am looking forward to serving as a trustee for the village. I appreciate the work you do and look forward to meeting you and works together to improve cross planes. I'm sorry for missing, missing tonight's meeting. Paul and I are celebrating twenty-five years of marriage. That will be the way that I am out taking up that. We should probably recognize her for putting up with me that long. Oh, brother.
Thank you. Do you want your?
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just a quick update from, uh, the town across plains, they, um. Early or mid, middle of last year, they had asked the village to, uh, assist them in some, you know, letter of sport or share projects on their port road. Uh, this is financed by the multi-modal or local supplement program. They did receive that grant award in an amount of one million dollars. And so they will be resurfacing airport road from the edge of town, um, into the village of Russell County township. Uh, therefore, world continuing to enchanted valley road. Uh, the project includes, um, replacement of crossing coves, resurfacing the road, widening the shoulder, believe, appointing some guardrails. And working on some of the elevation. So the project is, uh, expected to start later summer and early fall.
Okay, thank you. Uh. Another reports coming in?
I didn't have any other reports.
Okay. Go to general business. We'll take each one at a time. Discussion and possible action on a sewer adjustment request. First one is from Jeff Spitz Randolph.
Give me a minute here.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Use the same, I think it's eight seventy something.
Okay, you're back, and you'll see a recommendation letter from Jerry Greer, right, the whole facility, Jerry is representative. Uh, essentially, our request was, was requested by the surface Randolph, um, to adjust the floor. Uh, this sort of bill, uh, we understand this sort of bill to be impacted by a water softener and a leak toilet. A policy has been provided for you, uh, per the policy generally in cases where it is, uh. A plumbing issue on the customer side. We don't adjust it, thus, so we're just, uh, the store bill off of that, so that's our.
Okay, do I have, uh, a motion? Bill?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, do not adjust the bill for sixty-six, whatever, for Delaware.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, open for discussion. New discussion, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls same? All right. Next one is, uh, same request for nineteen oh four cross street.
Well, this one is also a sewer, uh, gentleman request, uh, from Holly Brandon. Uh, looks like she had, and helps like faucet that was leaking, um, and that the water did not return into the sanitary sewer system. I have seen a letter from our director, so, both facilities. Here, we are ready to make a sewer adjustment.
All right, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to amend, or to make a super great adjustment for. See, if nineteen oh four across street. Do I have a second?
I second that.
I have a motion in a second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls same? To discussion of possible action regarding the special event for red application for Milton Cross Plains Area School District. A W I, a sectional cross-country race on May for twenty twenty-one, and state cross-country race on May eighth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
The moves.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion in the second and a discussion?
On presentation?
Yeah, argument is, but, the people have.
Okay, so, uh, within, uh, contact by, uh, Milton or, uh, excuse me, uh, Brian, you know, uh, Glazier Creek. Uh, those who are representing, uh, school districts. Um, they, uh, recently posted high school, uh, cross country meets in, uh, the Bear Park area, including, uh, Glazier Creek小学, and. The Gracy area, uh, on every. Uh, parkway. That's worked out well for them. Uh, they have an opportunity here to hold sectionals. And then, uh, last, we talked potentially also, uh, the state competition. Brian, you know, this was on Zoom. I believe Mike Exon or, I mean, our president right there is also here, this was on Zoom. Brian, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure, uh, thanks so much for having me tonight. Um, I wanted to share my screen, but it's disabled. Can I have access, please?
Uh, yes, give me a minute here. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, so far, we've had two meets. Let's see, where's my? Lot of graphics here. There we go. We've had, uh, two meets, and both have been super successful. We've had a lot of praise from, uh, community and coaches and athletes, and, uh, they really enjoy the course. As mentioned, it starts on Glacier Creek, kind of wraps around, crosses Evergreen Parkway, where we've had crossing guards, and they've done a great job, and people have been, uh, you know, super about everything. They're very patient. We go through Bear Park and that kind of grass loop that goes by the neighborhood, and then we go through Bear Park a second time before crossing back over Evergreen Parkway and do the loop in reverse. Um, and again, both meets on April seventh and this past weekend, which was a much larger meet, uh, went pretty well. So what we're proposing or hoping for tonight from the board is to allow us to host the sectional meet, which is a larger event, but we know, um, there's a lot of support for it from the community. We feel there's a fair amount of volunteers. Right now, we have about fifty. Uh, last, past weekend, we had about thirty, and so we know with the discussions we had last week in the meeting, we can successfully pull this off, even though it's a, a really large event. So, we do have, you know, in this image here, we have where parking will be allowed and where, uh, there's no parking allowed. And I sent this out to all of the, um, you know, schools to kind of indicate like this would be the plan if it happens, um, so that way they can start preparing for it as well. And, let's see, I think I'm missing one. And then we're also gonna use St. Francis's parking. This past weekend, we had just Glacier, and it filled up, and we had a couple of cars go on North Military Road, but it wasn't too many. So with fifteen schools, we're expecting a, a much larger turnout, so we're gonna use St. Francis, and also have kind of a pathway for spectators to walk onto Glacier Creek and Bear Park territory. And in the back of Glacier will be just the buses. We'll have about twenty buses, and then we'll have the staff park over here, and then the two lots that are on Bear Park. We will charge five dollars per car for parking, and we wanted to use the Bear Park for staff, uh, since it's, it's public. It just seemed kind of odd to, to charge for that, so. We're just gonna have staff go in those two lots, and then we'll, uh, charge at the two locations. Uh, let's see here. I guess other things to just kind of mention. Um, looking at my notes here. The, the timeframe is probably about eight thirty-ish to, we're gonna finish much earlier than we anticipated. Uh, will probably be, be done by two, because all fifteen schools be on site at, at one point. I, I mentioned parking. Again, we'll have Glacier Creek, St. Francis Church, and then the two staff lots at, uh, Bear Park. We'll also be using no parking signs on Evergreen Parkway, Twin Pine Street, Shady Circle, and Military Road. Traffic, we do have the chief who is going to have one officer patrolling Church Street and North Military from nine AM. Um, right now, we have until five, but that was because we thought it was gonna be a much larger timeframe with four races, uh, spread out, but now all four races are pretty condensed. Um, and I can give you the timeframe of that in just a moment. Uh, we will have volunteers, like I said, on Evergreen Parkway, but we'll also have volunteers going into Glacier Creek. Um. You know, where, where the normal crosswalk is for students at night, so to help those coming from St. Francis. Uh, we will have a EMS onsite as well at the finish line, along with an athletic trainer. And then we kind of mentioned that the fifteen schools are coming, so that's, that's about two hundred and ten athletes, along with, we're anticipating six to eight hundred people, so there could be a, a definite economic benefit. Uh, we've called all the restaurants in town, just kind of notifying them, and also, uh, the coffee house as well. Just kind of knowing that there is gonna be a, a lot of people coming to this event from nine to two. And, let's see here. Other things, um. We will have barricades as well for safety on several different spots, including Military Road, Bear Park parking lots. Um. And then the restrooms will be open. And we will also have Glacier Creek open, and there'll be porta potties as well at the start-finish line, so we, we have, I feel like quite a few safety features in place, and also amenities to, uh, make this work. The time schedule is nine AM, the course will open along with the parking lots, and then the girls' first race is at ten, second, ten thirty. The boys' race one is at eleven, and boys' race two is at eleven thirty, and so then we're anticipating another hour, hour fifteen or so for people to kind of linger in and then depart after their cooldowns. Are there any questions or anything you wanna know more about? I can see that, yeah, the schedule is posted there. That, uh, did get changed after we had a special meeting on Saturday night.
It doesn't look like there's any question, but thank you very much. Appreciate all the work that you did. This should be a great event, and, like you say, very, uh, unofficial to the village. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And just to follow up about the state conversation, uh, we found out at twelve thirty today that, um, they went with Janesville Craig, who we thought last week was not going to host, because the WA wasn't gonna pay for the golf course, but I guess they changed their mind, so. There will be no state for us, in terms of hosting.
Yes. I appreciate that. All right, well, thank you. Uh, did Mike wanna make any comment?
Oh, yeah, yeah, from Mike, Jerry, or Chief Tony, were there any comments that he wanted to make in regards to this?
Um, this is Mike. I, I do not have any comments at this time. Uh, Phil, Brian's done a great job working with, with our staff to make sure that they have everything they need prior to, uh, the event coming on, and I think it'll be a great, great time for, obviously, for them. We wish them the best of luck, and should be a good day for our community.
That's, and then, all right, let's, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I was curious, is the motion, who did the two, um, conditions that were in the memorandum? To resolve issues between, from A one, uh, any resulting from A one prior, okay, so that one's out to the state, though. Okay, the other one said, any and all village costs associated with each race above standard village services shall be paid for by the host. I thought that was part of the agreement, so I, I thought it was part of the motion. All right, okay, I just wanna make a clarification before we pass it to everyone. All right, anything else? All right, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the polls same? The move. Excellent. All right, discussion and possible action regarding the request for Nick Hughes to amend the conditional use permit on the hillside, hilltop overlay gesture at twenty-seven oh eight Virgway Drive. I have a motion.
I move to approve the, uh, request for Nick Hughes to amend the conditional use permit in the Hillside Hilltop Overly District twenty-seven oh eight Virgway Drive.
Wait one second.
Sorry.
And we're motioning a second. We're open for discussion.
All right, presentation on this.
Go ahead.
Uh, so Nick Hughes was with us, uh, this evening, uh, he's applying to amend this. For, uh, for this property, he will be, yeah, twenty-seven oh eight Virgway, PAX. Well, it's going here. Um, this property does have a current developer's agreement and a current conditional use permit for the Hillside Hilltop Overlay District. Uh, property itself is, um, split into two zoning districts, one being the conservation district and two, uh, being the residential. You'll see on the map, on the screen here, that everything inside the red line here is zone residential, and everything outside, uh, is all, uh, conservative or conservation. And then there is a hilltop hillside protection overlay on the whole property. Our code allows for, uh, residential use and accessory residential uses within the hilltop, uh, hillside overlay. Uh, but does require that initial use permit. And so what we say is, is proposing is to construct or build a pool within the R one district, for the residential district, and you can see that representing by this triangle, with the square. As part of the review process brought to our attention that the current fence that's shown on the diagram, portion of it was outside our one district. And so, uh, in order to bring into the foreign, just to use as tools, uh, removing or relocating that, that's just around the tools, question. Now we are, are a zoning code, uh, for both, uh, fencing for the pool and, uh, fencing within the residence of a sick, current, this is not used.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, let's do a roll call over on this. All right, let's do a roll call over on this.
Trusty Groces.
Uh, yes.
Trusty enthusiasts.
Yes.
Trusty. Paul Kalso.
Yes.
Trusty Herman.
Yes.
Trusty Calwaiter.
Yes.
President Langbo.
Yes. Here is. Okay, vote for consideration for the revised conceptual plan for sixteen oh one Bourbon Road, Creekside Village.
My presentation on this.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so we have our Creekside Village LLC, represented by Jim Rogers and Bob Feller. They are on with us. Um. They had, uh, there had been a prior application for a zoning at sixteen oh one Bourbon. Um, in November and December of last year, um, at the time of the motion to rezone fail. And since that time, the developer uh has now provided a revised conceptual plan. Uh, for the development. As part of the the change in the revision. They are now proposing that the main building, the apartment building be relocated to the back. And then they are proposing that the townhome uh facilities be brought to the front of the lot. This was in response to uh some of the comments in regards to uh the street view of the property. This was brought to the Plan Commission and Plan Commissioner Review. In January, uh, at January meeting. Uh, Plan Commission gave more direction to the developer to include sidewalks and access sidewalk. Flipping the arrangement around so that uh the view shed and the access to uh the trailhead was more open. And patio being space area uh in the middle of uh development. And so that's highlighted also in their letter of intent. That's part of the request of Plan Commission. It also. As for the feasibility study uh for uh senior housing need uh within the village. This provided to you in your check. Um, at this time, I'll turn it over to Jim or Bob to talk about the specifics.
Hi, hi, this is Jim Rogers. Um, I think Bob Feller was just gonna go over a little bit more details on the site first and then I'll make just a few brief comments.
Yeah, we can hear you, but um. Hard to hear.
Many of the details were addressed in the introduction, but we're really excited about the redesign of the the property. We feel that we. There were some great comments that came out of um all the meetings that we attended back in December. And there was an opportunity for us to reevaluate the site, look at it, reorient it. And address those comments. Uh, probably the biggest boldest move was bringing the townhouses to the Bourbon roadside. Those are two-story uh townhouses, three bedrooms per with the bedroom with, I'm sorry, with the garage access on the the backside. That brought the scale of the buildings down to be really uh more in tune with the neighborhood, what the existing architecture is and working with the vernacular of the site. We also have connections, sidewalk connections out to the street. So it has that real residential type feel. Uh, the landscaping will work accordingly with it, soften the edge and just make it feel it's much more appropriate. Then with the three-story apartment building move being moved to the north side of the site, the grades are naturally dropping as you go further north. So that lowers that structure. So again. Keeping in mind being sensitive to the neighborhood that this will uh work with to uh lower the height or of the architecture. Then as with the original design, we kept the parking to the center of the site. So we're screening it from as many directions as possible. While at the same time providing a working. Free-flowing parking that is, you know, flexible enough to be used by both buildings. Um, the underground parking has been moved to the east side of the apartment building. Again, taking advantage of those natural drops and topography to to work with getting within the building. And then we're showing a um and a stormwater management feature in the northwest corner of the site. Um, that still needs to get fully engineered out, but we have worked with the civil engineer and they feel that we're very close on the size and. And uh, and actually the right location for, because that is the natural low spot to the site. So then, uh, I guess development, further development of the site, we have actually added another parking stall to the uh the surface parking lot. We are providing a one-to-one unit uh parking stall, underground parking stall or garage parking stall per unit. And that's. Uh, forty within the apartment building as well as seven garages for the townhouses. And then we've also added some outdoor amenities. Uh, that patio that was mentioned is adjacent to the apartment building. Is usable by both nice south-facing orientations of good daylight sunshine during the summer months. And then we're proposing a path connecting up to the trail system. Um, that is not only serving this development, but the neighborhood as well.
Thanks, Bob. Um, yeah, so Elf couldn't join us tonight, but uh. I I did want to just reiterate that, uh, you know, this proposal was um. Kind of embedded in the in the uh Cross Plains Tom Plan in terms of uh the needs of the village and and the want to provide uh for more affordable housing for seniors in the area. Uh, the forty unit building was is is going to be an age-restricted building on on the on the backside of the lot there. And so that would be age restricted at fifty-five plus. And then the townhomes on the front part would be for families, but again, those would also be um designated as as affordable apartments. Uh, in terms of the the range of affordability, it'll it'll run from thirty percent to sixty percent of the county median income. Um, and certainly, uh, we feel that based on the market study, uh, there certainly was a a a again, a a demonstrated need for affordable housing. Uh, in in cross plains and also some of the surrounding communities. So this will benefit some of the seniors in the area that are aging and. Um, maybe can no longer stay in their homes and provide another uh place for them to uh still um afford housing and and live within the area. Uh, in terms of the site, uh, again, we we really like the site. Uh, we think the site plan is um. Uh, it is much improved. Uh, I think uh we're trying to address everything that the village wanted us to do. And uh, in in terms of a a long-term amenity, um, w- we hope that the village views this as a as a really good use of a. A site that's currently has no use. Um, it's vacant land. And uh, so um, it it's going to take us a while to to get this in place. We're we're gonna have to go for Weta tax credits, which we would apply for in December of this year. But this would be another uh twelve million dollar construction project for the area. Um, and also would provide then again, a little bit higher density housing for the 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 businesses along Main Street. And it also would increase the property taxes for the site. So um, with that, I'll turn it over for for questions.
Everybody have any questions for Jim or Rob, Bill?
I have five. So I'm just gonna. Try to be expedient. I'm just gonna ask all the questions and then and then if you need to stand on any of them, I'm happy to do that. So, um. Here's five questions. Um, do. Do we have estimated tax revenue for the village? Uh, I know in the in the in the documentation that there was nothing in there at the time that we got the packet. Uh, but I'm wondering if you have any sort of estimate. Uh, two is, no, I only have four questions. Two is, um. So you have one-to-one parking, you have a multi-family, well, not multi-family, you have a uh. Three-bedroom townhouse, three seven, seven, three-bedroom townhouses, I believe. Uh, in the in the south side of the lot. Uh, they're gonna have more than one vehicle. Uh, where are they gonna put their second vehicle? Um. All right, have you looked at the one table for the flat there, correct? To make sure that's not going to interfere with your underground parking because we had that issue with the flood back in two thousand and eighteen. And my final question is, um. I know you're doing this for senior living. You have forty units for senior living, but you have seven units that are not senior living. Um, how does that, how does that work with your with your proposal and your tax credits with uh Weta? And and how does that affect the village? Those are my questions.
Um, Bob, I'll handle one and four and you can handle two and threes. That sound? Okay. Uh, I do not have an estimate on the taxes. Um, the the twelve million dollar construction budget. Wouldn't translate into uh an assess that assessed value for the village. Um, the assessed value would be more towards what the net operating income of the building would be. And because it's an affordable product. Uh, the rents that we're able to charge are are capped. And so the assessed value on this building would be significantly less than the construction value. Um, so the assessed value, I I don't know for the moment, but I'm guessing it would be more in the four to five million dollar range. I don't know what your mill rate is in cross plains at the moment, but uh. Uh, it would be based on on more in line with that, that sort of a a an assessed value. So hopefully that at least answers that that question in part. Um, but we can follow up with Bill Chang and get a more definitive number on that. And then um, related to the the site design and the and the uh, the forty units and the seven units. Because this is a a an application for Weta tax credits. Um, really what we have to do is we have to follow their application guidelines. And um, we don't, we don't dictate that. Um, we just have to follow them. And the reality is, is within the Weta tax credit guidelines right now, there is an incentive within their program. To build three-bedroom uh units. Uh, you get more points in their pointing system. The only way you can get a senior development done uh within the Weta criteria is you have to go for some of these uh family uh family points. So that's why you'll see designs such as this, where you have a smaller component. Of of townhouse units um on on the same side as a an elderly unit. But each of these buildings um will function independently of one another. Um, and it's hard to say, um, you know, whether there'll be a lot of mixing and there'll be very little mixing. Um, but we wouldn't view those as a as a management problem uh whatsoever on the site. Um, we don't, we don't feel that that would be a problem. Uh, especially given that the townhouse units are just a just a small number of them. There's only seven. Um, so Bob, you want to handle two and three?
Absolutely. So the the parking ratio is set up such that we have thirty-four. Additional surf, I'm sorry, thirty-five additional surface parking spots. And the intention was is that there was. Uh, eight to ten of those surface parking spots would be serving as second vehicle parking. And or visitor parking for the uh townhouse units. Uh, there is a pad in front of the. The garages currently not shown deep enough to fully put a stall on it, but we had um. One, I guess, reserve the the ability to play with the site a bit more such that we could get a second car. Uh, per unit at the unit. So one in the stall, one on the parking pad in front of it. And then that would reserve the remainder of those eight stalls for visitor parking. Uh, the fifty-five plus, we've typically have found that with a mixture of one and two bedrooms. That the uh ratio of what we have for parking is adequate, not only for the residents that uh live at the unit, but as well as the visitors. Uh, working on the flood elevation, as I recall, the elevation was set at eight sixty-six for the flood. And uh, we are currently showing our first floor at eight seventy-one point three-three. And the proposed basement at eight sixty-one point six-seven. Uh, so that means the eight sixty-one is a few feet below the flood elevation. But the entrance point to that garage is actually at eight seventy-one as well. So that means that's a full. Uh, five feet above the flood plain that are the flood elevation that it would have to get to before it worked its way into the basement. Uh, we'd be looking at uh clearly. Uh, a a water mitigation system with the building, be putting a proper insulation. Proper uh damp-proofing waterproofing around the perimeter of the building. If necessary, if the geotechnical suggested a drain tile system below, we'd be looking at that as well.
If you. Does anybody else have any questions? All right, do we have a motion or we'll get a discussion? Guys, I'll make a motion to uh approve the conceptual plan for sixteen oh one Bourbon Road, Creekside Village.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and the site is open for discussion. Anybody? All right, I guess I'll I'll make a comment. Uh. Here's my concern. Uh, I don't. Well, I don't believe residential, either multi-family or single-family fall into economic development. I know there's the argument that if there are more people, they're gonna. You know, spend more money in the village. It may or may not, but it's not impact me. Economic development is like, I bring it in a sectional track. We have six hundred people coming here. They're gonna spend money uh in the village here. To me, that's what I define economic development. My concern is we're taking our business district, which I consider Bourbon Road and Main Street and making it multi-family. We've already put three apartment buildings into our business district. This would be our fourth. Uh, I think it's gonna make it harder and harder for us to do a true economic development if we continue. To fill our business areas with residential. I like the project. I just think there's better spots in the village for it than on Bourbon Street. So. I I'm not going to support it because I want to give a real chance at uh. Doing some strong economic development in the village. And as I pointed out, this is a vacant lot and I think it has. Uh, potential. We just have to work a little harder to get a business here, but I would prefer getting a business and jobs here than putting out. Uh, uh, another multi-family uh unit. And with this uh particular unit, because it's in affordable housing, meaning your people are having a difficult time making. Uh, fair market rent, I don't think they're gonna have a lot of disposable income. Uh, to do this, all this spending. I mean, these people are needing the help on the housing. And I'm pretty sure their 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 funds that are remaining are going to be essential. Uh, so I don't really see this as an economic development. I see it in an area that should be doing that. Uh, the project itself, there's no doubt. I think their study clearly supports. Uh, the need for this kind of housing. It clearly falls under our goal of diverse housing. It's just not the right location. So that's why I will not be uh supporting it. Bill?
So I had the exact uh same thought process. Uh, I love the project. I think it's great. Uh, but I think there are other places, maybe in the east side of the village, uh, that there's opportunity there. Um, I totally agree that this is a business district and uh. And we we've got to stop putting this residential in business district. Uh. We just, we need more business and and we as a as a as a group years ago decided, you know, our goal and ten. Was to build up the business district instead of building cross plains. More more apartments isn't it? So uh, I'm fully in support of of uh. Uh, Jay's thinking as well as that. I would love to see this project, just not at this location.
Any, Andy? Yeah, I would. I guess kind of, I I'm more in support of this particular project. I think that the diverse housing needs of our community are being met. Um, I'm satisfied by the flood mitigation answer, uh, in particular being that close to the Black Earth Creek watershed. I think presuming what disposable income the residents may or may not have, sort of counterproductive in this discussion, I just would uh. Like to see the spot, this vacant lot, you know, be utilized for something that's gonna have positive growth long-term for the village. Um, and I I do get the argument that Bourbon Road is the quote-unquote business district. Um, but I just find that argument. But I just find that argument to be hard for me to understand, considering that directly across the street. Are residential, everybody for residential, or not for residential, everybody. And so I, I don't necessarily see the spot being critical to that identity of the village as a, as a business district. So I would vote in support of this.
Yeah, I, I agree with Andy for the most part, I. This, we don't have this defined as a business district area, uh, at least according to the comp plan. Uh, we have a plan mixed use, so mixed includes residential and includes potentially business and research and office. We've often talked about what does it look like from the creek, and uh, I think the looks of this facility, if you're thinking about cosmetics. Are, are just as good and not better than, than businesses were from, from that angle. We have a business area that's clearly a business area, our downtown area, and Glacier Edge, what's called a planned business. And uh, that could be revitalized before uh any new businesses might wanna be out in, in this area. Away from, essentially away from other businesses, uh, there's a couple of businesses, we have a fire station next to it. I think businesses like to be by businesses. And then lastly, this has been a undefined uh PUD for. At least ten years, at least ten years, and on the market, actively on and off the market since then, and um. We haven't found that uh, that magic fit for a developer and a business in that time. And frankly, I don't see that happening anytime soon, so that coupled with, of course, the need uh for. Low income or assisted living and also for uh fifty-five and older living, so I'm strongly supportive of this proposal.
I'm getting what Andy and Kevin both said, but my other thing is, I like the location for the fact it's walking distance to Northwest State. And I'm thinking, and parking is my concern, that would be my one concern with it also, but I do feel like a lot of them, I mean, I know. Friends that live across the street that are older, that don't have vehicles, but they can be swat to, they can walk to Northwest State, so that's why I actually like the location of it. Um, I feel like we have so many empty buildings right now that were old businesses in town. That if we want businesses to come to town, there's spots for them, um, maybe even part of. Um, Latitude Graphics Parking Lot, that's a huge spot over there that maybe something could be built there or something, so. I do feel like we still have spots in town for businesses, we do want businesses, but I am supportive.
Well, I'll say. It's a nice plan, we thought through a lot. But we went through a big build of apartment type buildings in town, and a lot of people reacted strongly against that and wanted us to put the brakes on. And now we're just proposing to do another one without giving ample time for the economic development ideas to come to fruition. Whether or not we have spots or not in town is debatable, especially with one that's. Whether or not this is a business district or not. Could possibly house some sort of business in this location. There are also the throwbacks to the fact that this would be, you know, for economic, um, fifty-five year old. Fifty-five and older, older residents, um, I mean, it checks a lot of boxes, but we're also trying to do other things. I don't know, at this time, I don't think I'd be in support of this project, just for the reasons given, we had a, because of our. Pester of major apartment buildouts and economic development, uh, giving it a shot to before.
Anybody else?
The motion is in court, right? So I vote no.
Trusty Hartman.
Oh, yes.
Trusty Caliber.
Yes.
Trusty Rojas.
No.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Or President Langford.
No. Or she was not here.
I would like if uh Jim or Bob or whoever, I would like to meet with them or at least do a Zoom meeting. They're open for that.
Um, yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, I'll have uh Bill contact you and will say something else.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Alright, number five, consideration of a proposal conceptual plan for a condominium arrangement for thirty twenty-five, thirty twenty-seven. Industry.
Uh, presentation on this. So uh, property owner, uh, Kyle Weiss has put in an application here. Uh, to split the lot, it's a duplex uh zone as DR six or duplex six. Uh, currently, uh, building is split into a side-by-side duplex. And the property owner desires to uh, desires an arrangement whereby. He would be able to split it and sell each individual. Originally, uh, they consider a zero-lot line. CSM, and you see that there, over due to. The inability to, to be to finance a separate lateral to the same lot. Uh, has decided for long run so. Proposing a planned development and arranging a condominium setup for this property so that. They can be able to continue to, and continues the, the property as our individual. So again, this is a conceptual, uh, just putting out to go through the rezon process. And then we would also require uh condominium bylaws as part of that's.
Alright, uh, do I have a motion? Alright, I'll make a motion to um yourself, the conceptual plan of the condominium. Arrangement for thirty twenty-five and thirty twenty-seven industry, do I have a second?
I say.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, open for discussion. Bill?
Okay, so have we ever done this in the past?
I think there's one or two examples in town.
And so. How would they work, I mean. I mean, I.
I don't know if you have any complaints, but Judy, you know I'm better than I am.
My slandering, and it's a, we don't have a choice on this, right, it's got to be sort of the learnings that we have to. Yeah.
Right, he wondering why there was here this, if there's etc, so we can't do without it.
I, he, I listened to the meeting, he said it can't be prejudiced. He didn't say there could be reasons why we couldn't be against it, but you just can't be prejudiced against it, which the question was never asked. Are there reasons why it can be?
I, that's all I understood, you can't say no because you don't find. But could, right, there could be some other reason, I mean, there's like, one doesn't have all that impulse heartbeat, but they, they're gonna have a. A slab or part, that's what I, that was my understanding, I didn't, I didn't get the understanding that we have to approve every time someone comes in.
So, coming back to my question, so they're talking to share the wall. Share, share the ownership of that wall?
Yeah, it is, basically what they're doing is, it would be similar to a zero-lot line.
Right, okay, so.
Okay, except for there's not separate, the big problem is there's not separate sewer and water, that's where.
Well, that's, that's the key, I think, right, is how you, how are you gonna regulate how much water and how much sewer you're gonna be paying? Not, not you, but, but you.
That's would be in the condominium agreement.
Yeah.
Well, you have two separate property owners, right?
Can I, I can answer some other questions?
Okay.
So currently, it doesn't exist right now, but uh, the building in the place, so it does have separate meters for utilities. It does not have a separate lateral into the.
Gotcha.
So then, uh, as it is set up right now with the landlord, uh. The split on, on the cost of the uh blocks, uh utilities, maintenance, uh, who is responsible for what? Will be sold out in the bylaw, that's why there's this cost.
So there could be Asia safe in this too?
Wait, wait, or association, or, yeah, that's, that's the purpose of the uh bylaw.
Okay.
And so, um, and back to the comments, so this, the process that, that condominiums are approved by in our organizations. Through the planned development, and this becomes a question to hit on, on the, the comment, you know, you're not, I'm proud of this. Or not proud of this. The decision to make a land use change uh is similar to, maybe just made previously in that. It's a legislative decision based off of length, of course, you don't know how far away is. A condominium, condominium use compared to uh duplex.
Alright, any other discussion?
Yeah.
Hey, Michael, so.
Though I asked about the homeowners association, so. I guess my question is, what are we approving, and then what are the processes after if this is approved tonight? Like what then happens, or what aren't we seeing right now?
Yeah, so right now, again, it's a conceptual, this is the conceptual stage of the planned development process.
Okay.
And so the concept. Thereby splitting the lot, yeah, uh, planned development and that, that the bylaws of the homeowners association is, is acceptable to the laws. Or. We would turn around and have it go through the rezoning process, which includes. Property over submit, um, at that time of application to rezon. And then the bill of work, where through the general development, or consider the, the commission would consider the general development plan. That they recommended in the bill of order, or consider it after the plan commission, and then there would be a specific implemented plan after that. So, similar process as to all the planned developments that we've had in town. Differences that this is for residential and that for uh.
Hey, any other, Michael?
So there's this document in here, what is this document in here that's talking about the agreement is made between the overseas owners of the real estate? Is this an example?
Yeah, so these are documents that were drafted or suspended by zero-lot line, zero-lot. Prior to running into that issue, so right now we're trying, that's, that's the issue that we're trying to resolve. What we would essentially do is chance, like, does information.
It would be the homeowners' association, you know, I guess because my concerns are, you know. One person's gonna be owning half of a roof, etc, I would, those details. You know, I guess people buying it would know that, but that's gonna have to be clearly defined, I would think, we'd want it to be.
And that would not be, that's not a real addition, that is between the buyers of, of that. Of those possible, and then you're getting a little deep in the weeds, in areas that we would not be part of. So all these is buying up expenses and if there's a beef between, that's not a good for them.
Sure.
Any others?
The title work will get changed, so they know they're buying a title, when they go buy the title.
Or if the roof is owned by the homeowners association.
Yeah, that's not our word, alright, anything else? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all saying aye. Alright. Bill carries, uh, we are at a discussion possible action on the public facilities need assessment for municipal water.
Evening everyone, it's been a while since I seen you in person, and first time seeing Andy, my name's Brian. With uh Town and Country Engineering, and we work as the, as the village engineer. And what we've got for you tonight are a couple items, uh, separate items for sure, but similar. As well. Working in this specific order, uh, because one will depend on the other. The first item uh for discussion and consideration tonight is the public facilities needs assessment for your water system. The next item will rely heavily upon that, uh, what we're gonna talk about right now, uh, the impact fee, but for the current discussion. What we've got is a, a report that's a bit of a. Renewal and extension of previous studies that the village has undertaken over the past twenty-five plus years. On where your water system is. Where we project your population and water needs to be over the next forty years. And. What are some things in the immediate, mid and long terms that the village should be considering relative to its water infrastructure? I can certainly take questions on the document, it's, it's a little thick, so instead of going through it, uh, just some of the highlights. Reflect your population, which is growing, uh, there are multiple ways to look at population projections. Uh, for these types of studies and for this specific study, we always recommend going with the uh most conservative, which for us means growing it. At, at the higher rate, uh, so that you are planning for the future, a lot of times our recommendations. Will have a, a, you know, a year timeframe on them, but. Anytime you're working in public infrastructure, uh, you know, we're really looking at a, a seventy-five year plus timeline for these items. Your reservoir, your wells are all uh on that range of age, and they're expected to last well beyond their twenty-year or forty-year design life. So, uh, we did assume some of the more, uh, we'll call it conservative, uh, higher population growth when coming up with these recommendations. Uh, we looked at a number of options for your well, your, excuse me, your water supply, which is your wells. For your water storage, which is your tanks, you have two wells right now and two tanks. As well as your distribution system, which is uh in good shape. Though it is limited by the topography of the area, just the elevations of the valleys and the hillsides. And it made some recommendations moving ahead. Uh, those include. An option we call W two, which involves constructing a new wealth three. With some modifications and upgrades to the communications, in particular at your existing wells. With um likely future abandonment of well one, which is your oldest well, smallest well. At some point in the future, uh, when it is no longer economically feasible to, to keep it running. A little further out, though still uh on the horizon, a visible horizon, would be looking at a future site for well four. Uh, you, you don't need a, a well right, another, you do need a well three, uh, but looking at a site for well four, partly because. You are a fast-growing community and. There are a certain opportunities to secure land, either as part of future developments or current developments. And we, we have had some questions and concerns from existing neighbors of the, the well three site. So uh, just kind of lessons learned from that is wanting to get in front of that and make sure everybody knows it, even though you don't need a well for. Now, or even in the next ten years, uh, probably, uh, it's not a bad idea to start looking for a site there. And then as population demands become real, uh, looking harder at that new storage. Tank and new storage location. Both. A new well four and a new storage location would play into. A potential decision by the village to really explore and pursue an additional pressure zone. Which relates to those elevations I was talking about, right now, uh, you do have some homes in the northeast corner of the village already. That are really at the top end of elevation, which means the low end of water pressure that they receive. And some of the other areas, long-range forecasting, uh, some of those areas are gonna be at. Could be at elevations that would require that boosted pressure. So that's the sort of executive uh summary on it. And we certainly recommend uh approval. And we certainly recommend uh approval of the reports. But can take any questions or discussion after that.
Does anybody have any question? Hey, Bill?
Just one one question, Brian, did you tell brother that we have? That's an alleyway as far as uh how. How much more life.
Yes, that gets inspected every five years. And. Jerry would know better than I, but um I cannot remember the last inspection of it, other than uh, they're inspected every five years and draw what's called a dry inspection. No water in it, inspected every ten. Um, I'm not aware of any significant issues that would limit the life of it. Jerry, do you have a? Any other inside info on that?
Yes, it was inspected this past summer, twenty twenty. Uh, other than coming up with for uh repainting, there were no issues found.
Yeah, in the scheme of of reservoirs, that's that's kind of a young one. We've we work with reservoirs that are approaching a hundred years all the time.
Any other questions? I don't wanna talk. Okay, go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I just need to start about something, sorry. Um, so well one is gonna need substantial upgrades at some point in time in the future.
Uh, it it could use some upgrades, the uh, the capacity of the well, the rate at which it produces water. Has been decreasing over time because it it does tend to suck sand out of the. Red rock formation, so it's been throttled. Uh, we're actually not recommending any real, what we would call major upgrades to the mechanics, but just the communications right now. As part of, part of the pending project.
If there was a timeframe estimation on what well one would have to be upgraded, do you have any?
Um. Very roughly. Five to ten years. Um, it it would really depend on some of your other growth needs, uh, and when you decide, when or if you decide you need a well for. Uh, right now, just letting it do its thing. It does not cost a lot of money and it's a a hole in the ground that produces very good quality water, just not a lot of water per minute. Relative to your modern wells.
That's me, thank you. Just, uh, I don't know, cause Derek mentioned it and I was aware of it. The painting of the reservoir is half million dollars, that's the cost of painting that. So I didn't see that listed in here, I think it should be. And I would also, and we're probably a little early on this, but when we talk about. Uh, getting uh borrowing the money and for the water system and getting the rate increase. I would, if possible, try to include that in that, because the last thing I wanna do is go get a rate increase. And then in a year, I know, you know, we got five hundred thousand, so we gotta do another rate increase. I'd rather get it all into one and get that one increase, so we're not, so you just came off with forty percent increase. We're gonna have another one, I really don't want a third one, so if we can work that into this, because I think it is, should be part of that. Report, uh, that would, to me, would be useful for us.
We're already planning to do that, Jake.
Okay, good.
Need to, yes. Yeah, the that painting class unfortunately is not uncommon for a tank that size. Uh, the rub is, of course, it's uh considered maintenance oddly, because it doesn't, it's not this permanent, but yes, we definitely will include it.
And just, uh, I don't know if you, were you gonna go over the the three choices on page one sixty seven of the report on the wells? Uh, when you look at that, I think what uh staff and some of the meetings, if you look at W two. That's kind of what we're doing, but we're gonna instead of abandoning well one, we're gonna keep well in operation as long as it possible. And then that should give us our number over here, we should be able to add another two fifty, that would give us uh eight ninety, which is pretty much the same as. W one, if I'm remembering what we discussed, right?
Yes, that is, uh, that is what uh was listed as the, I guess, preferred alternative would be W two with that deferred abandonment of well one.
Alright, any questions, Michael?
Brian, when you talk about improving the communication system of well one, is that changing out the control hardware, the scatter in there as well?
That is specifically that, yes, exactly right.
Okay, that's what I was, I wasn't sure if you were changing the radios or the whole shebang. Okay.
Alright, so so Brian, you're looking for us to approve this report in general, or do you want decisions out of this report?
Um.
Because some of it is immediate, some of it is future, so.
I I would, I would, if I may be so bold, uh, we would request approval of the report and the recommendations therein. Uh, which is W two with a delayed abandonment of well one as the well option. Suggestion that you start, you just kind of actively, but passively, uh scout for a new site for well four on some vague timeline. Differ any immediate plans for a pressure zone creation. And wait until you uh. Get to a point where you, where you need to pursue a new storage tank. And that's, that's gonna be some combination of growth, development sites.
But I think it would be helpful to do the same for the reservoir and for between like the well, let's kind of identify the best spot for. So we have that in the future, so if that area is to follow, we can get that man and let them know that this is where a reservoir eventually could happen. To avoid what happened with well three.
Well said, well said, uh, our recommendations uh on the, in the back of report in section five point three do talk about. Um, five different sites there. Uh, some are better than others based on different things, but uh, yeah, approving the report and its recommendations would would essentially also mean that. The village and us and staff would just actively passively keep our eyes open for a new reservoir site.
Okay. Everybody clear on that, what we're doing? Alright, do I have a motion?
Bill? For municipal water and and those recommendations uh with the caveat that study two is going to include. Not eliminating well one, but using it till the end of life.
Awesome.
They have a motion and second, any other discussion on this? Alright, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all full, same, the move. Alright, discussion and possible action on.
So I can dive into that also, I mentioned before, these are sort of hand in glove. Uh, that now that we have. The report on what your needs are for your system. Uh, to Jay's, I think line of questioning is, is how is this all gonna get paid for, right? Uh, Wisconsin municipalities do have the ability to create, it's called an impact fee, which is a very special term. And requires a very deliberate choreography on on how to enact an impact fee and how to collect an impact fee and how to spend an impact fee. But it uh essentially boils down to. It's a way for communities, utilities to. Capture costs on expansions of your system based on the people that are going to benefit from them. And uh, what that boils down to is, you know, reservoir. Or well, it costs, you know, several million dollars, uh, while the need for a new well. In theory is tripped by that. Three thousand five hundred and first person who was in the town by the numbers. And you have in a lot of communities, kind of, it's a gray area, is you know, who's the last person to use the capacity on that? Well, the last person to use capacity on that reservoir. But at some point, you're far enough over that ledge, out on that limb, that you need a new well and that, and you're there. So the the existing community as a whole, they do get some benefit from that well. Uh, right now, you could easily describe your system as a bit underserved with your drinking water supply. Uh, if, if your largest well go out of service right now, that's a big problem, because all you got left is the little fellow, uh, well number one. So uh, the existing customers do benefit from a new well. Uh, because it provides reliability, it provides redundancy and and frankly, just better service. Uh, same for a reservoir, uh, the existing community would benefit from another reservoir in similar ways that. You have better fire protection for the whole community, you have more standby water. Uh, that allows you to to withstand a well going out of service or a well. Uh, either planned or or emergency going out of service. So with an impact fee, what we do is we look at what your system needs are, which was the last agenda item. Quantify some costs for those and then look at, well, who's gonna be benefiting, who are the new people that are gonna be benefiting from this and to what percent, to what extent? And the balancing act there is, while there's a certainly some. Uh, some reasons to to. Declare that the new people are eighty percent gonna benefit from this, they should pay thirty percent of it. If you take that tack. And new people don't show up. You don't have anyone to get that money from, uh, and PSC does not allow you to double dip, if you will, both counting on new people and raising your rates. So it's really important to get a more reasonable look at who's who's likely coming. And what is the likely benefit there and trying to balance out those risks. So this study uh took a look at presumptively that these recommendations would be acceptable and. Uh, then looks at, alright, what are likely new developments in the next decades? Uh. I say next decade, even the current decade, uh, so we looked at scenic valley, which is a development that's already in existence. Homes are already going up, that developer's agreement included. A separate agreement stating that the developer knows an impact fee is coming. And that they will need to start paying into that once it is set by this body. Uh, the Xander slash Saint Francis area, both the currently being pursued development and. Assumed densities on the remaining lands in that farm. As well as uh some lands to the south and east of the village, currently owned by Plastics Ingenuity Pension Fund. And crunching all the numbers, distilling down, how much of the, you know, that extra five hundred thousand gallon tank and then that new wealth three. Uh, benefit existing in new customers, we are recommending that, uh, in fact, thirty two percent. Of the well. Is benefiting just the new new customers and twenty six percent of the new reservoir would be benefiting the new customers. Uh, because the reservoir project doesn't exist at the moment, we were kind of pushing that off to the future. But the report does recommend an impact fee of one thousand four hundred sixty eight dollars per E R U, equivalent residential unit. For uh homes that are built. After the impact fee comes into existence, uh, some next steps then for this group. Uh, one would be to consider and potentially approve the study. At which point, uh, you would engage. With uh Paul to create an ordinance that formalizes and codifies this, the study and the impact fee. And begins a hearing process, at which point. Interested parties generally developers will. Wanna be heard on whether they think our thirty two percent is good, bad, or indifferent, or whether our cost estimates are good, bad, or indifferent. Uh, assuming all those dominoes fall, then the village will start collecting impact fees. Uh, some of them retroactively based on the new homes in scenic valley, others over the next X number of years. Uh, it does create a dollars in, dollars out cash flow requirement. That the village needs to spend money, spend that dollar within eight years of receiving that dollar, is the first in, first out. Uh, so that's something that uh. We have to keep track of with Bobby and uh. Continue doing that until such time as those improvements are done and or paid for. So uh, for that, we'll again take, take questions from folks.
Yeah, Bill?
So you had Sundance taken out of that equation, like, I would say of a hundred five homes, I didn't.
I don't use water, I need justice, I heard.
So there's only, I thought only the back lot were ready as well.
As old as all of that.
So they've got changed until.
No, well, that's how it's been since twenty thirteen, when they first.
No, no.
That's how it was for, and they were gonna have uh paint and we eventually got them to change to go to sewer, but. But anyways, that's why they're not part of it, because there's no water going out there.
I could have sworn we were doing water for most of the, or maybe that was sewer.
Yeah, sewer holder. Okay.
That that's correct, yeah, um. It it's, all of it would be wells, um, and. Boy, I actually think all of it would be gravity sewed now also, given the the last set of plans, which frankly is two years old, so it, that's a bit of an evolving.
Rinders.
Yeah. But from a lot, this is just, I should have been, uh, should have brought that up, this is just water. Nothing to do with sewer at all, totally separate, uh, different discussion.
Anybody else? Otherwise, let me ask you, on a scale of one to ten, what's the risk we're taking on using thirty two percent? I remember last time, we were between twenty and fifty percent, it became thirty two. What what's the risk? Because I think group needs know if we don't collect it, then it's gonna have to come out of our general account. Because we're not gonna be able to check up rates to cover that, you mentioned you can't help it, yeah. So what kind of risks are we running with using this thirty two percent?
Well, um, on a scale of one to ten. As an engineer, we we would always say five, right? Um, but just to play with some of the numbers there.
Yeah.
So we think thirty two percent is a, is a, is a rational, reasonable, defensible number. Uh, we don't want it to be too high because we we don't wanna expose the village to. One, you know, claims and legal fag battles with. A developer who owns these lands, it's what the hell, guys? Um, that's crazy, and then you end up fighting all that, we don't want it to be too low because if we wanna be fair and and rational and reasonable to adjusting rate pairs. Uh, so it, we feel pretty, we feel very comfortable with that thirty two percent. Um, what it means in reality is that. If. If these numbers. You know, every home that gets built after this is impacted, as long as, you know, they're depositing their fourteen sixty eight. If you don't get to four hundred and. Four and eighty five additional units here. The the rest of the system would have to not necessarily make up all those millions of dollars. Uh, we have not, to be fair, we have not bid out the new well. Uh, we got the test well done, but the new well, we're working with our, again, which are. Rational, defensible estimates, but uh, as as those costs come in, we do have contingency in there, so what you'd be trying to make up. Is actual cost for the well. Excuse me, estimated cost minus actual costs, and you'd be dividing that by, do you get four hundred eighty five new units? Over the life of this impact fee, uh, so that's why we think you're, you're kind of, you're in a very comfortable spot in the middle in that. Every house that comes in gets you a little closer to that, that eventuality of of. every house that comes in gets you a little closer to that, that eventuality of ma- making that revenue that you need to make up thirty percent, but not so much that you, boy, you're just dying to get them here is that's that's our balance. So it's a fair discussion and a fair point that there is some risk. You're that not know, those are the two houses, those are the last two you get for a long time, but that's that's why that number is not zero. Because it, you know, it should be some of the new folks, because that's really what's driving about thirty two percent of the need for it.
Bill, Kevin?
I'm just curious, and sorry if I missed it, Brian, what is the sunset of the impact fee? Like, because if I'm looking at four hundred and eighty homes here, what if two hundred come out in the next ten years and then there's just this wall? I think that's the best risk.
I think it's.
A couple known commodities for us right now, but there's a couple unknowns, like the PI problem.
Not as far as Paul's on the line, is he?
Oh, yeah. I didn't think there was a life.
I don't think there's a limit, it's just every dollar has an eight year life.
Okay. Right. But you can do the impact until you reach that number.
Yeah.
That impact is not based on those specific sites. If PI doesn't happen, but something else does, you could.
Yes.
Okay.
And and that's.
That's good.
What did you mean every dollar is an eight year life? Is that from when you collected, it has to be spent toward the project? Is that?
That's correct.
As one of us, just making sure I understand. So that basically saying that when we build the well for two million dollars, we're saying that however much it was, seven hundred thousand dollars is going to be financed from impact fees. And so if we don't make it from impact fees, we can't do a rate increase for it because we're saying we're going to do it from impact fees is what you're saying.
That's my understanding of it.
That's what PSC is advising, yes. To your point. And if you don't spend that dollar, it's to be returned.
Right.
So now that won't be an issue here. Unless uh unless, you know, and we work in some communities that they started it you know, four or five years ago. And sometimes growth is not what they thought. And now they're getting to a point where that dollar is about six or seven years old and they gotta do the thing they said they were going to do when they started collecting this. For your specific case, you really, you know, there's a sixty eight percent chance reason why you need this well. Whether there's a new house or not. So where you're at right now is that you're on a track to, in fact, build new well three in twenty twenty two. And spend that money in twenty twenty two, maybe in the twenty twenty three. So the idea of those dollars going stale on the shelf is not a problem. But we do want to develop, you know, we want, we kind of need slash want those folks coming in to pay the loan payments. So it would be paid for to be upfront, but it'll be actually paid for using safe drinking water fund from the D N R. And that'll come with a twenty year loan, low interest loan. And those loan payments get spent by combination of of these dollars plus system balance from the water utility.
And and that's the reason why we're not doing impact the reservoir, because it would force us within a year. We'd have to get a reservoir going, just otherwise we'd have to return the money.
So then one, so then in our rate case for the water utility, you know, we're going to be borrowing this money, but they're going to know that seven hundred thousand is coming from impact fees, and so that's subtracted off the rate increase. So, okay, I got it.
Any other questions, Brian? I can't remember, did we do a motion on this already or no? We have a motion. All right, I'll make motions to accept the impact fee report and recommendation of one thousand four hundred and sixty eight dollars for E R U. Any other discussions? All right, all in favor, Shay and I? All all same? All right, discussion on well two modification.
I'm gonna turn the floor slash mic over to Kevin Chambers from our office, who knows a lot more about well two.
Yes. For those of you that haven't met, my name is Evan Chambers. I should be seeing more of you. As we move forward with this well stuff, I'll be helping Brian on well two, well three and the water project in general. So what I wanted to bring up tonight, those already got it up, awesome. For those on your screen, we're at like page two eighty four, two eighty five. We've been working with Jerry and Mike on some concepts for expansion of well two. As you may have seen in the public facility needs assessment, this well two currently has electrical, chemical, and the the process equipment all in one space, which is that southeast corner of the building. By code, that's not allowed and just for longevity of your equipment, having all of your chemicals in one space with electrical and well infrastructure is just bad practice. So part of that is expanding expanding the facilities to make a separate electrical room and a separate chemical room. The trouble with this site is we're landlocked, if you will, to the north is the existing concession area for the ball diamonds at Bear Park. To the east is where the electrical services all come in. And then to the south, which you can see on a little bit of the picture, there is a new generator that just put in and the parking spaces for for the park. So that leaves us with heading west, which takes up the existing bathrooms at that facility. So what we've got proposed here is busting out a couple walls, making some door, new doors, filling indoors to have an electrical room and a chemical room. Which then means you need some new bathrooms. So we have proposed extending the roof line to the west. Keeping this all under one roof, and I'll hit on some of the high points with that. But then adding a eight fixture bathroom for per side in the southwest corner there. All ADA compliant to and from the facility and again for fixtures per side. In between the buildings, we've got twenty feet of what we're calling a breezeway. So everything that's not shown within walls is just exposed outside air, but still under roof. So we've got a twenty foot wide breezeway to the north and south, and then about twelve foot deep on that northwest corner facing the north. And I guess we wanted to bring this to your attention, and I'll let Mike and Jerry jump in if we need to. We've we're on schedule to submit this with the well three project for being thirtieth submittal for the safe drinking water loan. And wrap again, wrapping all of these costs that eight hundred and some thousand in that study. Wrapping those those costs up with the well three and putting it all on the loan.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Evan on this? Or does I guess Jerry or Mike want to add anything?
Jerry or Mike, you want to speak on this?
I guess I just field whatever questions might be out there.
All right, does anybody have questions, Kevin? Yeah, I'm curious why the breezeway, any extension of a roof line or I guess run off from the from the roof line and hanging to that tree? As opposed to just putting the bathrooms up close to to the new electrical facility? What was the thought behind the breezeway? In between, it seems also like a wind.
Yeah.
And a, I don't know, just an odd concept to me, if people hidden from the outside, nefarious activities taking place in there, who knows?
Do you want me to speak on that, Jerry, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the the main thing there, Kevin, is the current system, the way it's set up, when people rent the facility or it's being used for for baseball or other activities, is that there's no real pavilion space for them. The picnic tables are pretty much right up underneath that, which went right into the restrooms and right into the concession stand. So where people were sitting, there's roughly maybe about five tables that fit comfortably under there. So this idea was, you know, thought of just that we were able to expand that that pavilion area or open, open shelter kind of area. And so that would also expand then further to the west along the restroom areas too, yeah, right where they're pointing now.
That's one question, that's one question. And the second one is does this, is this legitimate cost? I mean, I know you said it was, but I feel like we're financing bathrooms essentially under the guise of well two.
Yeah, right. So because we're taking the space, because it is code required and we're landlocked, we are have, we're taking the bathrooms and justifying the loaned cost because the well, the water utility is taking those facilities away. And adding the concept of adding the roof line, keeping it all under one roof line, then makes it more of, instead of a standalone object that the Safe Drinking Water Fund may look at under a little closer microscope, this keeps it all under one roof. So that it can be part of that loan, but.
Bill, so I kind of agree with Kevin's observation that you have that old north area of the pavilion just really obscured, hidden by the trees and bill. What would it take just to move that old bathroom to the north instead of the south side? Is that a problem or?
It's on the west side right now.
On the west.
If you do, if you do that, eliminating the pavilion area for people to rent. The, there would be no place to have picnic tables under a roof.
Oh, sure, it would, because if you moved the pavilion north, you not even have the same space that you have right now. But you wouldn't have a hidden area, you know, to the north side of the bathrooms.
Yeah, so he, yeah.
You see what I'm saying, Mike?
I do, yeah, I do. I don't know, I don't know about the width, Bill, because the concession door to meet ADA requirements, because the the current bathrooms do not meet ADA requirements. So we always have to have an ADA porta potty up at Bear Park. I'm not sure, just looking at the schematics right now, I'm not sure it looks like the those bathrooms would fit unless we're able to go further to this, to the east. You know, kind of a jog out where like the generator and stuff would be kind of coming back this way, yeah. Because otherwise that door to the concession stand is right, is is where it's opening right there. Yep, right there.
Right.
So it looks like the current bathroom footprint is, would be. I mean, I guess we could try, we could move that door.
Well, I wouldn't say move the door, I'm just concerned that you have a hidden spot there from a whole view. And, you know, keep everything, just keep all this and the links exactly the same they are. Just move that bathroom to the north on the east side, on the west side.
Oh, so you're saying move it closer to the to the ball diamond?
Yeah, or those trees over there.
Well, that tree is an ash, a purple ash that will probably be coming down with the bore here before we even do this project, but.
Okay, so.
But, yeah.
I'm just saying, just if you look at it, that's great if you can.
Sure, sure.
Michael and Andy.
I have a question, I'm not sure I'm understanding it. How much of that is going to be under new roof with the breezeway? Is it just the stuff between the buildings or is it on the front? It's also on the front side, the north side of the bathrooms, all of that is going to be pavilioned?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, everything would be under roof, the new roof, there's a center line, right, yeah, right where the, that's existing roof. So everything west of that is an extension.
Everything's gonna be.
Correct.
Andy, yeah, I'm just wondering, this is for Mike or anyone, but has this been down to parks direct yet for any community input before?
No, it it has not made it to parks. We we wanted to come here to make sure we're on the right path with the board. And then send it back with board, you know, asking kind of the questions that they'd like to hear from the committee itself for recommendations.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Michael and myself.
What's the size of the current bathrooms? Inside these bathrooms, you know, you have four toilets on women and four areas on the men's. What do the current ones hold?
The current restroom sold two.
Right, I'm just wondering if the sizing of that restroom building is oversized for need.
Well, I'm gonna comment, I'm gonna follow up with Michael, because that was gonna be my comment. Two things, one, I think places are getting away from having gender bathrooms, they're going to unisex, they're much more friendly for families and gender. If you look at a lot of businesses like UW Health, they've converted all their bathrooms into single. I'm wondering if we would take that and you would make it for unisex bathrooms. That would be equal to what we have, and I would think that would meet the needs for that since it's, you know, a temporary place where it's fall games and it's not like it's you know, there's people that I I think we should seriously look at having four individual bathrooms. There with, and it wouldn't add, I mean, you keep the same number of sinks and you would cut in half the number of stools that she would need, but I'm pretty sure that's where people are going in that direction of making individual bathrooms. So they're unisexual. But I really think that needs to be looked at, and I think you could cut down the size of that building.
Jay, do you have any parks or or restroom facilities within parks that have that design, just so we could look into them closer?
No, the only reason I know that is when I built the police station, I had done put you that they can have a gender, and there was a big push to convert them, saying that that is not what is being done now in in buildings, they're doing unisex to be more gender and family friend friendly. So I don't have a design that I can think of a park that has the four. I'm just bringing that experience back in. With this, to me, it makes sense. It would make it a smaller footprint and you would have equal to what we had before, but much more versatile. Than when we have sex identified restroom. Any other?
I I don't know what the physical space requirements would be to design something like your talking about Jay, but a minimum of one of them is going to have to be ADA compliant. And since this is an unheated structure, the building also has to be set up with a space for draining down the building for the winter. That's what that maintenance hallway is in the middle. So there are a few considerations here with this this type of a setup versus one that's in a fully heated year round building.
Right, right. And and just so you know, they would all be ADA compliant, they usually are. And you can still keep the hallway, because if I'm looking at this, it's twenty three feet. So if you cut that in half, that's twelve feet, looks like almost twelve feet by another ten feet, that's a hundred and twenty feet square feet, that's plenty big for a bathroom. Just using the size here, but I think you can look at, I I'm just throwing it out there, whoever the object is. I would just, I I personally would like to see a model that's that's usable, workable for you guys with four unisex bathroom versus the gender ones. There we have, can't be, anyone else? And Kevin?
Yeah, I was just gonna jump on that as well. I think I know the high school's moving towards gender neutral facilities and the new structure that we're currently building. And the way that we're sort of designing it, it's most of them are, all of them are ADA compliant, and it's not necessarily being identified specifically as gender neutral, but just all abilities sort of facilities. And so it's like a one service stall or just gender neutral, if it is a, like a group or collective restroom facility. And so I think ADA compliance is sort of part of that process of determining that.
Since we're talking details on this, my two suggestions would be to move the bathroom facility up against the electrical if you can and. Put the, uh, overhang to the west and north of the bathroom facilities and then, uh. Yeah, and, oh, and then, yeah, I would support the, the idea of getting six bathrooms, I think that's a really good idea.
Wait a second, Kevin, so you're saying put it, put it up against like where the current bathrooms are or?
Push it up against the, what is, would become the electrical room, so move it to the east. I like, if it was this design, I would flip it on a ninety and put it to the east. I'd flip it counter or clockwise ninety degrees, put it to the east. And then, that was my other point, uh, have the doors open up underneath the. I mean, if you're underneath there in the rain, you gotta go to the bathroom. I go outside to get, to go to the bathroom, so I feel like. The door should be underneath some sort of cover as well.
Hey, Bill?
All right, I'm just going to comment on. Situation. If you're, and Mike, you're, you're a better, um, judge of this than I am, but you're at a ballpark. And you've got a couple of games going on, and if you have eight. Eight stools that are available versus four, is that gonna cause a problem at the? At the, at the ball games and, and the best are going on there?
Cause a problem to have more or less, I don't.
Less, half as many, right now.
Yeah, so. I mean, it really depends on the event, uh, the things that are happening. Obviously, we're talking about, you know, cross country events that are happening now. Um, you know, we're hoping to expand on those in the near future, you know, Bear Park expansion in the near future. Um, that was kind of the thought process behind expanding the, the toilet areas. I, I'm fine with the unisex. I've obviously seen where we've had, uh, you've had the, the two bathrooms, a men's and a women's, and then a family. You know, in, in between that or near that as an option as well, um, which we could look into. I've seen shelters that way, but. Um, I guess we'd have to look to see about the footprint or, you know, costs for all those two, so, sorry. I think for a normal baseball game, Bill, you know, on a, on a Tuesday night or a Thursday night, I don't think you'll see a big. Big difference, you know, with the four restrooms to the, you know, technically eight stalls, you know, going, going bigger, but. Uh, the rest of that, I think you may see a, a change to it.
Okay.
I'm just gonna respond, if, if, if we have a cross country track meet like this with six hundred, then you bring in porta potty to supplement. You know, you don't build, uh, a structure like this for the fuel beds. You build for what is the common need, and then you can always bring in porta potties. To supplement when you have these big events, and I'm, I'm glad we're getting these big events, but everybody's used to. At these big events, having porta potties as a supplement to the, the flesh you want. Michael?
Um, with, now knowing that that whole area is gonna be under a roof, was that planning on being like? Asphalted under there, like covered, like, you know, pavement?
Concrete, still be a concrete slab.
Okay, it would be, so it wouldn't be crass or.
No, still level surface for tables.
Right, okay.
Just an expansion of what's there.
It'd be like a regular pavilion.
Correct.
Brian, did you have one something you wanted to add?
Nothing additional, you guys already covered.
Okay, very good.
All right, okay, Andy?
Yeah, I just, I mean, the future is the future, and if we're definitely gonna be expanding Bear Park and. The village is expanding, I think, you know, more facilities is definitely better than less facilities. I'm just wondering if it's typical that we do this, some of the guys have a. Well, expansion or just generally? What do fellow board members think about that in general?
I personally think we're pushing, we, the ba, I have no problem with replacing, because that's what we're doing. We're eliminating bathrooms. So we shouldn't replace, but we're doubling, uh, the capacity and the size. I, you know, I don't know. How they look, how full someone's gonna examine that, but I, I have, especially if we're saying we're doing it because we're expanding the park. Definitely doesn't have anything to do with the well. I think because the well has taken up the bathrooms, I think it had, we have a right to get. Replace those bathrooms, clearly. I have no problem. The size of them, I do think there is some. But do we put a pavilion expansion under that size, like, you know?
Andy, just another question, I think this is for Mike probably, or anybody who can answer. You're saying that the, the current facilities there are not ADA. They're not meeting those, those requirements as of right now?
That's correct.
Any other discussion? So we, I, I.
This is just discussion.
Yeah, just discussion, so we're gonna, uh, Mike, do you have? And Andy, do you feel you have a pretty good idea of what's a very bad, uh, park and ride? Yeah, I'm doing it. Okay. Oh, Jerry, go ahead.
We do have to keep in mind timing to, uh, get this. Included with the clean water application. To get the low interest money.
Right, so if we could get this on the May agenda, um, then, uh. We would, we could deal with it at the board meetings in May, and that, the application, my understanding is June, is this some?
June thirty.
It's tight, but you can write everything but this, I guess, and I'm not sure how much of a price point difference is going to be.
On a price scale, I'm not, for the changes you're proposing, I'm not worried about price. The timeframe. The end of May, the next meet, if, assuming that's the end of, are you even two, you said?
Well, yeah, we're at the May thirteen, I don't know when's park and ride.
I guess. If we get to the end of May, we're, we've got a month to get, I mean, the DNR submittals roughly a fifty, sixty, seventy percent submittal. I mean, these are not final plans that go in, in, in June thirtieth, but we need, we need to have a representative set. Um, that, that conveys what the application is for.
Our, our meeting is May seventeenth.
So, can, can we just do a motion to, to approve this with, with? Uh, consideration for?
But there's no reason.
Okay, just wanna make sure that these guys take care of.
Yeah, they're, because like you said, they don't see that what we're talking about is gonna be a major price point, and we're still gonna.
Okay.
So they can do ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of it.
Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you, guys. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding the, how do you pronounce that, porch, like? Field Memorial Simon, take your part, large. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, we were probably gonna take off, but I saw that the KP path grant item got removed from the consent agenda. So I can, I can stay for that if, um.
Okay, let's just take, deal with it now. Do I have a motion to move? Item fourteen, which was item eleven on the consent agenda, up to, uh, number nine?
Yep, so.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All the same, so we're, we're talking about, uh. It's a, uh, adoption of resolution twenty-one, twenty-one dash zero five, authorizing staff to submit an application for. Park Ride Grant Program over the county highway AP multiple use path. You pulled this off, Bill, questions that you have?
So, what I'm concerned about was, I thought, I saw something like. A half a million dollars for this, for so, and, and then we put up, we give a grant for a half of it, and then we'd be licensed to the other guys?
Uh, um, yes, maybe, and maybe. Uh, the grant application would be to apply for fifty percent funding. Uh, if, if the project was successful at Dane County, then you'd get a, uh. An agreement sent back to you asking, do you agree to do the project at some point in the next five years? If that answer is no, then it's no. Um, and then, if the answer is yes. There are other funding mechanisms available to, to make up that fifty percent shortfall if, if you want. Um, those would include DNR funds, uh, opportunities as well as. Uh, Dane County Highway has indicated some interest in cooperating with the village on a project similar to your county P. Effort, again, that, not committing the village to that effort, but. Uh, you're right, Bill, it, it is a fifty percent shortfall, but submitting the application does not mean you have to accept the funds. Nor does it mean that you have to, uh, commit to doing the project now or ever. Uh, it would just be too. You're interested in applying for the funds would be the action tonight.
So you have to label this as a multi-use path, so I'm guessing it's basically what we.
Yes, sir. That would be the intention, ten foot wide asphalt path.
Okay, and then, and there is no parking lot?
Oh, uh, park, a park and ride is a clever acronym by Dane County Parks. Uh, it's P A R C, it's Partners in Recreation, and ride is for any. Yeah, so it's, that's just their, it's a clever acronym they use. Uh, but, yeah, no, the, the concept is not, but, uh, it is, as you saw, it's a very schematic, uh, concept, so. That would be domino number twenty-five to determine. You know, you, you do have lands as part of scenic valley, you, you could create a trailhead on it or something, but. Way beyond what we were asking for tonight is, is, is more just. Is it okay if we apply for the funds? If not, we don't have to, but if so, uh, I, I told Mike and Bill, we. The applications are very simple, or we do those at no cost, so I certainly not intended to imply any commitment or risk on the village side.
Then, I'll just make a motion, we approve. So we, we approve resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two one dash five. Um, right, staff submit application to park ride ramps for the county heavy heat kicking.
All right, I have a motion, second, all right, discussion, Michael?
One quick question, so what is this doing? Just tell me real quick what, what all this is doing.
Uh, a, a positive vote on this would turn me loose to complete the application, submit it to Bill for signature, and he'd submit it to Dane County. And May, and then you'd wait a couple of months to see whether you were successful. The next step after that would be coming back to this group and. It would be discussion, possible action on entering into an agreement with Dane County Parks, so. Tonight is just, can we submit the application?
Absolutely understand, but I mean, physically, what would this do if we win?
Um, it would, so the scenic valley project, the private development there, that'll be constructing a path in fairly short order. Um, on the south side of County KP to the west. Uh, which will end right at Gill's Way, it'll literally stop at Gill's Way.
Right.
This project would connect the east end of that privately funded path to, uh, Bourbon Road.
Okay.
And a little north, uh, to have a off-street option for pedestrians and cyclists.
But isn't there sort of a path there already? I know that there's an asphalt path there.
Sort of, sort of is, would be the operative thing, it's a pretty narrow, it's, uh, it would not be considered to standard bike.
So this is like upgrading that?
Yeah, replacing it, replacing it with a ten foot wide version of asphalt path.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
I'm sorry.
What are we trying to, what's the end result physically, like on the ground?
Sure.
Right, I got you, thank you for the other.
No, I'm sorry, no problem.
Just, I'm sorry, just one question, uh, the disconnect to the boardwalk or will this all stop at Bourbon Road?
Uh, I said Bourbon Road, it connects up to the boardwalk.
Okay, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All, all the same, so move, thank you, Brian.
Good evening, thank you.
All right, back to the sign in Bear Park, I have a motion. Second, all right, I have a motion in second, any, uh, discussion?
I just had one question if I knew. Is the picture that was given in the packet, is that to scale with how it would look? On the sign? Did anyone know?
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll have Mike answer that, and I believe we have.
I think it probably would, I was just.
Yeah, it's as close, so I took the picture and, uh, I, I, I put that together so you could get a little bit of a visual, I guess. But yeah, it is going to be the length of the scoreboard, and, uh, I think the dimensions are like, oh, yeah, they're there, one ninety-two by twenty. Um, is, is the total.
Again, yeah.
Which is, which is the exact same to what the sponsorships are above that.
Oh, yeah, okay, great. That's what I was curious about, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all the same, so move. All right, number ten. What we love it now, uh, discussion and possible action regarding your request from Hunter Ziegler to farm whole lot four. Of Creek Crossing in St. Francis. So, okay, all right, motion in the second, discussion, Kevin?
Uh, I just wondered where the, where the rental cost came from, one hundred dollars per acre?
Correct, that's why he's currently paying for, uh, to Xander, and it was a, a, a principal.
I just, I ask because I rent land just south of here for almost double that. So I didn't, I'm just curious to know if that number should be refigured, or if this is a one-year deal. I certainly think it's. As an unproper organization, we have to look at sort of point rate, otherwise it's a private benefit. Uh, so I don't know what, if, if you, Bill, it should be looking at something else.
I, I guess, I'm, uh, I'm comfortable with it, because if we remember, most people told me that it was all underwater. And it is a low spot, so I think there's probably higher risk in that spot.
He's not really getting fourteen acres out of it.
No, he's only doing the, right, the acres.
Yeah, so the acres is up for the day right now, I believe there's a large section that, that has, can, can.
Right. It's a pretty small area, and it's, and it's low, and I remember people talking here how that most of our.
Well, I guess, but it says rent, a hundred dollars per acre for fourteen acres, so fourteen hundred dollars. So you're saying he's actually funding less than fourteen acres and we're charging him less, so I guess.
I just, that's a good point, I, I just thought it was the section that is farmed, okay.
Yeah, so the, the, like, remnant is, uh, dry after a sample, change, right, that remnant is. Actually, I wanna talk about that because we currently do not own the property, it's owned by, uh, Creek Crossing, uh, St. Francis. So, we would submit what we're approving as, as part of the deal, um, they would hold a lease agreement. We don't have that.
When do, I guess, I, now that brings up another question, how come we don't own that?
The final plan hasn't been signed.
Oh, because, okay, we approved it with those conditions, but they haven't.
Jerry, did you wanna say something? I had something to the conversation.
Yeah, uh, in reference to Kevin's, uh, rental rate, um. This particular property is, I would gladly rent, uh, that stuff you've got south of town. For a couple hundred bucks an acre, but personally, I wouldn't give you fifty bucks an acre for this swampland.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you. Any other discussion? So I guess I'm a little, do you wanna talk some numbers or something?
So if, if, if the village board is, is in agreement, so we've got our terms, we'll submit. The grant coupled over to Creek, uh, Crossing, uh, St. Francis as the owner of the property. They will then enter into a lease agreement with Ziegler, and then we would assume that at least upon transfer of the land.
So do they, do we get the money or do they get the money?
So we would get the money whenever we get the property.
Okay, okay.
We would assume the, um, the landlord position for the property.
Gotcha. All right, any other questions or discussion on this?
And we're, we're fine with the dollar amount? That's what was.
Uh, it sounds like, I'm fine with the dollar amount, it sounds like we might be even getting on ahead, I, I understand that's really wet, so.
Yeah, the, the part north of the creek is where all the cattails and birds live in there.
Well, understandably, this isn't a huge amount of money, and it's more about the, you know, process of the lease and the, the, uh. The other text that goes in here about, uh, identifications, defaults, et cetera, that are probably more important than the money.
Right, keeping the landlord in session.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All, all the same. All right, all in favor say aye, all both same. All right, here is number on our chart, law number section twelve, discussion and possible action to adopt an ordinance to repeal. And recreate chapter thirty-one regarding building regulations. This was back and there was some question, you want to just clarify?
All right, so this is an amendment for a repeal and recreation of chapter thirty-one, which is our legal code currently uh in code B uh by. Inspection services for the residential side, not 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 authority of providing commercial side. This provides us that we'll be uh including like full inspections, which now uh puts public safety uh requires for us to. Have a record. And so my understanding of the practice, we have been doing those inspections, uh this will be clean and all. Now, last uh those were being believed, there are a few questions in regards to. Charging for simple replacements, furnace, uh water, uh here. Rough windows, et cetera, and then also there was a question in regards to the maximum amount of penalty set at one thousand dollars. And so we went back and we we took a look at it, uh my understanding is uh currently we charge twenty dollars for the simple. Uh replacements, uh basically that's to um pay for staffing uh and myself to review. Uh the permit, make sure that it's being called and then I actually issue that permit, approve that permit. It's a no inspection, so it actually does not go to jump to inspection. Um in regards to the the penalty amount or fee amount, um you know, that number was plugged out. Uh primarily due to the code changing from residential to also include also commercial, but that number didn't be set by. The village board uh in chapter one of both ordinance. Penalties that are not covered within this specific chapter, uh the maximum amount in chapter one is.
Okay, this, why don't we get a motion and then we can do the discussion?
Uh I make a motion to adopt an ordinance to repeal and create chapter thirty-one regarding building regulations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second, we're open for discussion, Michael.
Okay, this is just where I don't know things, how would somebody rack up fines of a thousand dollars, like what would cause that?
So if say they didn't have a building permit or an installation. That would be a violation of the orders, and so for every day that they're in violation, they can have up to a kind of a thousand dollar fine. For each violation.
Right, right, and so there could be multiple violations of what's happening is what you're saying. Okay.
Bill?
So is it? Is it twenty-five dollars per violation per day or is that set?
Yeah, so so generally, um each day that it is in that compliance may be treated.
So.
Because in in the level of building construction, every day that that's a compliant, if there's not a compliant.
So is there any consideration for, let's say, my hot water heater goes out on. Uh Friday before Memorial Day weekend, now I have no water, I've got flooding in the basement, whatever the case might be. I need to get someone out there, I need to get a new hot water heater, office isn't open until Tuesday, let's say, because of Memorial Day. And I get a hot water heater in on Saturday, can I get a plumber who can do that? What does that need for a building permit and fines and inspection and all that?
So generally, in the way that we would enforce something like this, where we take those considerations. When you have a penalties section, now that's 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 your goal to, if you can't get your points. And so that's the way I would treat it, uh that's the way that I would with the building inspector to to treat it. Especially if it's in a circumstance where. You know, in in a disaster or it's not the home of the property.
And I can tell you that's how the courts do, the it's very discretionary, you know, on the fine, but but what it is is. There's a need to have some type of leverage to get building codes correct. So so in your situation, you come and get a building permit, that would be the other. Because you you fixed it right away, that's what the code is trying to do.
You know, we do have Paul Johnson with us tonight, and I can let him talk, attorney talk, but. No, we've we've had this this system in my work previously, I've dealt with this, and you know, when you can't get compliance from. Say the the property owner at that time, or you do, and it does end up going to court, now they delete the word of the yard at that time also. So the purpose of having a having an end of course, something to fall back to, let the village uh to to try to get compliance, to get compliance.
I I I'm not, and I don't have any problem updating this code, I just want to make sure it's fair for us, that's all.
Yeah, that's what, that's what. I just being what I did, we were constantly using, usually using apartments, you know, to get a plan or to. It takes a lot of work to get them to even write tickets and for the courts to hold up, because they end up fixing it, and that's the end result. But it's trying to get it fixed.
Yes, Michael.
So this was in regard to the twenty-dollar simple replacement fee, I kinda. Uh since you was here, since the accessory was here, I kinda went back there and kinda asked him some questions concerning that. Cause I know last year, I believe during the border review, when, you know, replacing roads, windows siding. Uh there's a twenty-dollar building permit for that, he had said during that conversation that if a rut or that of a. Citizen replaces two of those three, that gives him an indication to. Us to reassess the house at a higher value, because two of the three rough siding windows have been replaced. And he gets, and he sees those building permits and it takes him, and it sends up a flag with him saying, oh, I could reassess this house because they've had these improvements. So then, uh I asked him about, well, what about like, do you reassess a house if they've replaced the water heater and we do a twenty-dollar building permit with that, and he's like. With internal things, it's difficult for me to say, cause you got a new furnace, I'm gonna assess your house at a thousand dollars more, because. Houses have furnaces in them all the time, it just depends on their age, so they might change it from fair to above average, like he has a grading scale. But he really didn't say that it would affect his assessment all that much, it's more when the resident is going to sell the house that they. Are more concerned about the furnaces, air conditioners, what the age of them are in terms of value. So. I think keeping the building permits on the external things are good, it helps with the assessments, the internal ones. I question their value because it's a twenty-dollar fee that a resident is paying to replace uh. Appliances inside water heater, furnace, air conditioner, I just don't know, I mean, I don't know, what what do you guys think about it? But that's what I got from him.
So, well, I'll give you, I'll give you an example, so so it's important to know and have. Information, building permits, whatever about fees at this point, but building permits for those things, because. Like in the twenty eighteen, like, you know, a number of of furnaces were being replaced, after that you have homes being sold. Uh we get, we do get questions about uh homes that were impacted by the fire. And so our our only way of knowing uh if something was done to that is to the lawyer process. Uh I can tell you uh that not everyone knows of it, you know, and that. Uh potentially uh equipment is replaced, so only a knowing, things are built for public. Uh so this is our effort in trying to to record that, the fee is simply just paying for our time to do the homework. Now, the issue that we do run into, you know, uh something that may be considered as a simple replacement by the property owner. May lead to other issues, uh potentially that could trigger uh an an inspection. And so if we don't have that check and balance there, uh again, we would never know that. So those are just some of the reasons I've seen it done both ways, um yes.
I have a question, if, like what Bill was talking about, if somebody has a water heater replacement, they don't get a building permit and then. You find out a hundred days later, like are they gonna get charged two thousand dollars?
No, so currently, the way that our fee schedule is set up is that if they, if they don't pull, if if they call late, building permitting, they get charged double that amount. Okay, so it's not the, yeah, yeah, so again, again, depending on what it is, um. But yeah, it's a common point.
Well, I mean, where other, I I I remember having this discussion. Last time I'm on board and I I was from the position is we shouldn't be charging. I don't mind people getting the furnace, because I think there's a value, but we shouldn't be charging. Or permits if someone doesn't actually inspect, you know, it seems, that that was where I'm coming from, what is someone getting? For pulling the permit, you know, on ones where the inspector comes in, you're getting an inspector to make sure. That the plumbing's done right, the electric's done right, but on some of these others, if they don't come to look, you know, for the water softener, even the furnace. I don't have a problem paying for the permit, but then someone should come to make sure that it was installed properly, but I'm certainly not gonna help. You know, so that's where I have more of the wrong, is that what service are the residents getting? For that permitted at a dollar amount, but like I say, that was when this first started and I thought we went without charging people for certain things. They had to fill the permits out, but they didn't have to pay unless an inspector did. That's where I would go on this, but.
Go ahead, Andy, because the permitting process just also help ensure protection for the villagers and that they're having qualified beings who are certified in their fields to do this work. And then with the the overhang of a potential inspection.
Well, you know, that's a good question, because I think you could go and fill out the permit and then you could go hire whoever you want to. If you had someone, if the person had a signed permit and they needed to be a certified plumber or something, I would agree, but see, that's how it was in our our pool.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're, if you own the home and you live in home.
Right.
I believe that you can replace it, not if you rent it, then you would have a license contract, and that would require inspection.
Right, wow, so, yeah.
But but I did learn that water soft, like water softener we have is thirty years old. And so we're gonna have to get it replaced sooner than later, and the code for water softener now versus where we were in nineteen ninety-one. Is way different and you need more stuff on your water softener now to be compliant, so that's where I'm with Jay, it's like. You know, I can go out my water heater, just six few things, and I would not be in compliance, and it would be really helpful to be as a as a village resident, to have someone say. No, that's not right, that's not safe, so I mean, wh- wh- where do you go with that, right?
Right, because if you bring in an inspector and all that, you're gonna have to charge more than twenty bucks, and then people are gonna be. Man, that on a water softener, they're paying a hundred and twenty bucks for a permit, bringing on just to have that checked out, I, like I say, this is a very. Difficult one, I think, on the fairness part of it, but again, twenty dollars, I don't think is a whole lot, and it does. Give some type of of uh official documentation that something looks like.
So I got two things, so one is. And we're having this discussion, I think the twenty dollars is fair, because if we do need to bring in, if Bill does need to bring in an inspector. We now have banked enough money for other. Uh uh a permit that would pay for that particular inspector to come in and and inspect what was done. Uh the second thing is we're gonna have to advertise the heck out of this thing uh over and over and over again, because people just don't know. You know?
But that's another, I guess that's another topic, I think what we need to do is kind of. This, we've been kind of working with all of them, we need to get this on the collection, if we want to do some automation, we need to bring it back or send it to a group. Or committing to more things you want, well.
Right, so we have the motion, we have the second, is there any other discussion on 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 this that can be dealt with with the actual ordinance?
All all I'll say is that going and buying a twenty-dollar building permit, it just might make your house appraisal go up.
Sure, roll call, please.
Trustee Duzias?
Yes.
Trustee Broches?
Yes.
Trustee Calvater?
Yes.
Trustee Hartman?
Yep.
Trustee Komakowski?
Yes.
Uh President Linco?
Yes. All right, we're going to on your sheet, general business is twelve, it'll be actually thirteen. And uh what this should be is just a presentation on the wheel tax, and I just want to do a little background, you're gonna be seeing quite a few reports coming out of the finance committee. And the finance committee, if you remember, is not gonna do recommendations, it's basically. The group that does the legwork, the research, and then provides a report for you, so in this case. Because we're, you're gonna be seeing a number of these, I didn't wanna pile up five, six of them on one night. So just about every meeting, we'll be probably having a report, and this is just a tool, put in the toolbox, and we talked about. When we start budgeting and talking about budgeting, this is something we can look at, so I just wanna quickly go. Uh through this report, and the idea is just to answer any questions, I want you to feel comfortable. And how it works and how it's applied, and then you can just kind of save this in a file under budget, because you're gonna see other ways of uh doing revenue. There will be some topics, that there will be a proposal uh on the table, I can tell you right now, we're working. Uh close on a curb leave pickup program uh for the village, so again, it'll be all laid out, but we will not be recommending. You know, a yes or no, it's just information for you to have, so kind of keep that in mind. When we're we're going through here, that there isn't going to be a a recommendation at the end. So the background, basically, the wheel tax covers three different kinds of plates, the auto cycle, the automobile, and front registration. Uh of eight thousand pounds or less, there's a list here of all the specialty plates and all the other plates that do not um get charged. The Department of Transportation, for every plate that they um. Uh collect a wheel tax on, they charge you seventeen cents per per vehicle. The one thing that uh is collected when people register their car, so there's no administrative work for us to collect the money. As people pay their registration, this is just uh tied on top of that, and then they send it a a check to to the village. Uh you should know that the wheel tax um is based on vehicles kept in cross planes, so. There may be someone living here, but if it's registered in Madison, Madison gets it not across planes, it's where it's registered. There's already surcharges for hybrids at seventy-five dollars on the registration and a hundred dollars for electric cars. But there's a bill currently, I just saw on the news, to repeal that and and move an extra five bucks for everybody, so that's there. Right now, there are thirteen counties and twenty-eight cities, villages, and townships in the state that collected. There are five in our area, uh Dane County does, Arena, Old High, Salt City, and Madison, and it ranges from twenty to forty dollars. Uh when you look at uh a little bit of the numbers, just to give you an idea, the 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 chart there. It's the number of vehicles, right now, we have about thirty-two hundred vehicles uh registered across planes. You can see what amount of money would be brought in at five dollars, ten dollars, twenty dollars, forty dollars. And then the administrative cost is the seventeen cents that the state would collect on on those plates. And we just did kind of an example of uh impact, uh if we did, you know, the sixty-four thousand is the twenty dollar. Uh amount, and if you look at, it just shows what it would do to the mill rate and value, a home value of two hundred and seventy-five thousand. A home value of two hundred and seventy five thousand would see forty seven dollars which we got reduced. And there are property cars, so if they have one or two cars, they're saving some. If they have three cars, they're spending more. But this is assumed that we don't take that sixty four thousand dollars and spend it somewhere else. We actually take something off the property tax. On our budget this year, we had fifty thousand for street maintenance and a hundred thousand for street replacement. We went through some of the pros and cons. Obviously, one of the pros is there's no administrative cost to the village. That removes costs from the property tax and it's tied to a user fee. Uh cons is Dane County already charges a wheel tax. Uh there's no public transportation options in the village, so having a vehicle is kind of ma- mandatory. User fee on vehicle, but not on miles driven, and it's a regressive uh tax. Uh this article that uh you see is a really good article that kind of goes over and it's. Explains why wheel taxes come into it and how um third local governments have used it and. And uh the advantage. And then the last part is actually the statute, which is a pretty simple statute. Uh to read through. So I uh. Will open it. If you have any questions on this, but we're not going to discuss if we're going to have it or not. It'll be shifted to when we talk about like.
The only information that I would like to see uh in this report is is you've you've talked about it is um. The money that we already are paying for highways and and cleanup hundred thousand and and forty thousand or something. Yeah, uh we are already getting money from the state for our roads.
Yeah.
And that's going into our bucket, which is going into general funds. I still want to know. Where specifically where that money is going, because I think that is what's going to help. Whether or not this wheel tax is necessary or not.
So you want to know where the the money to get from the road fund, transportation fund is for?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
We can add that to that. Anything else on this?
We put a regressive tax, I don't.
Regressive is where it's not based on how much you make. So someone who makes. Thirty thousand dollars pays the same amount as someone who makes a million dollars. So it's it's regressive in the sense that obviously. A proportion is being paid more by someone who makes less and so on. That's what what we talk about when it's regressive. Michael.
Or Kevin, even as an example, when I lived in Nebraska, they had a personal property tax on your automobile when you registered it. So if you drove a fifty thousand dollar car, you paid a lot more to register it versus if you drove a thirty.
All right, thank you. Any any other questions on this? All right, so I'll just uh put this in your toolbox and we'll add that to the report and get it out. Okay, we are at last item discussion regarding village hall slash police department. This was requested by Bill and Kevin, so I will turn it over to them.
So we've had the village hall for over thirty years. The police station is obviously in the basement. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to go visit the police station that we have downstairs. Uh if you haven't, I would definitely check with the chief and get a get a tour. It's a short tour. Um but there are definitely problems with with the foundation. There's problems with the whole police station itself. There's not enough bathroom, there's not enough. We all know we need a new police station, right? And we keep talking about getting a new police station and this goes with village hall too. I'm fine with that. But more importantly, the police station, because um. Uh I think our community is 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 tied to safety and. We we need to stop just talking about it and actually start planning for it. So, you know, let's say we decide in twenty twenty six. We want to start looking at a foundation for our police station. We want to find out what the best uh uh ideas land. All that, how much is it going to cost? And start saving for it, start planning for it rather than it come a day when when there's a crisis and now we have to pay out of pocket. And we're not prepared for it. So my recommendation to this body is that. We have a separate um committee, temporary committee, to look at what it would take. To build and and cost out uh different ideas for a police station. I don't think we need to bring in. Uh Brian or anybody else for this at this at this point. And start looking at it and then come back with maybe some recommendations or some at least more questions for the village board so we can start. Planning ahead for a new police station and for uh and possibly a new village hall.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with most of what Bill says. I will put the village hall at the same level as the police station. I don't necessarily think they have to be co-located. I mean, I think that may there's some economy of scale. It makes certainly makes sense, uh but. Not a requirement in my mind that they have to be. And I do think we also should be looking in the future. I don't know if the process starts with the ad hoc committee. Or if the process is something that we do have to go and talk to our engineers right away or professionals who do this with other communities. Uh who who find and understand pricing uh for these buildings or these facilities or the needs or the amount of. Not just uh the building itself, but the space for parking, et cetera. Uh you know, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense. Uh maybe you can start with an ad hoc committee, but I think pretty quickly it's going to get to the point where that committee is uh working beyond their their knowledge base. We'd have to bring in the engineers. Because it's a big expense, we do need to plan out quite a ways. Uh I'm certain of that. And you know, uh we've like we've done with the well today. Um we're going to need to. Pay a little bit at some point uh to find out, to get some answers. Uh and so if we're going to budget for this and even in as early as twenty twenty two, I think we we start thinking about it now. So we can get it in next year's budget if we need to. Hire an engineer or contractor to do some study for us, to find some information for us.
Yeah, I mean, I I would agree that this is an emergent need for the for the village and I like Kevin's approach as well, that it's probably going to be. Maybe a little bit more than an ad hoc committee should be able to handle this beyond this onset with the need of quickly approaching. Um I'm also just kind of curious generally from anyone. I know that this is in the comprehensive plan of potential locations, but building business also being part of. The processes, talking, location, et cetera, or.
Right, and that's something I think our committee can do. I don't think we need an engineer to tell us what locations are are available, but you know, I think, you know, to to. Kevin's point, I think there's going to be some co- collaboration between a committee and and their engineers um for that.
I'm agreeing. I think that there is a need for this. I don't have a crystal ball, but the way I look at it, rates are going to be going up. I mean, I honestly think right now there's an all time low. And if we are going to be spending money and need to borrow money, I think now it might be more sooner than later that we want to look at, isn't it? Just because I think in five years from now. It's going to be a totally different story or whatever it is or whatever. So I do think if we are going to do it, I think we need to do it almost sooner than later to catch the low rates.
You want to say something?
I just want to comment. I just said I'm concerned that. What am I concerned about? I'm concerned. No, um. No, I I I get it, but uh oh, I know that, you know, we're just coming out of uh of being in the red.
Right.
You know, and I don't want to put us deeper in into the red, but we're just starting to get out of it, so.
All right, I guess I'm a comment. I think uh maybe it was a month, month and a half ago. We had this discussion in a closed session and Bill and I were going to start working on this. We have been uh. It just some years, six years ago, we spent thousands of dollars on a study. This study is still good. And it talks about uh the village across planes, village hall, police department, joint building improvement. Plan. So there's a lot of information here. We just have to update it. Bill and I are meeting again Wednesday to go over. So what I would ask that give Bill and I another maybe month and a half, clearly by a budget time. And we will have, I think, the information you're at least looking for and it'll be. At least a place to start uh to look into it. Um so I I hear what you're saying, but Bill and I are 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 working on this. Um I don't mind if you want to set up another committee. I think it's too early. I think what Bill and I are going to be looking at is exactly what you're talking about. The financing of it, the location of it, the size of it. Um and needs of of staff. So that has been. Uh work done and we're continuing to work on. Like I say, we have another meeting Wednesday, so we're not. We're not sitting on this. We're 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 moving forward. So I guess I would ask that you just have a little patience to. Give us a little bit more time. I'm working with the architect that did Midtown Station to help me. With the pricing of it. Um so um. We're, I can assure you that we're moving forward on this and there'll be something for you to look at. So I would just ask for a little bit more patience.
Kevin? Is is one of those copies available online or a hard copy?
I had this when I was on board last time. So I've just got it. There's one before this.
It was presented in two thousand and thirteen, I believe, and so.
So I know, but uh what is it? I mean, can I? I would just be, I I I just heard about it, but I'd never seen it actually.
So you have it electronically?
Yeah, that 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 will be part of our presentation too. It's, there's a long history.
Yes.
Of this and what's transpired in the previous with previous administrators and those boards before before us. Uh so part of this is a recap as to. You know, where we've come since then, what we're doing now, updating that information and then presenting that to them.
And if you remember, that was my frustration. We spent money twice on this and it sits on the shelf. Because we never take the next step, so um or I hope we that we will. And I think some of the ideas that have been mentioned are definitely going to be part of this. Andy?
I I I don't necessarily need a history lesson, but what's older, the comprehensive plan or or this this report right here?
The updated, this is just a report. The comprehensive plan gets updated every five years. And we updated it even sooner, but yeah.
Yeah, the last the last comprehensive plan update wasn't told them.
Eighteen, dude, this is thirteen.
Is it five years or?
Well, well, we just do it a lot. I just know that.
Uh by statutory requirement, you have to update it.
All right, any any other things on this? Discussion topic? All right. Future agenda items? Do you have any more uh full quotes? Are there any items that people want? Put on the future agenda? You got a lot of them. Kevin?
Resolution to support Mills Nelson's stewardship program.
Resolution? Well, would that go to, is that a parks thing?
Nope. What is it?
What is it?
The it's how we it's state funding like we've used for the park over here. It's a program that's being reauthorized right now.
To the budget.
Oh, you know, the budget?
Okay, it's so if we've gotten the part the county by the park money over here, that could be. The other half could come from the state's stewardship program, which is what.
So do you want to do a resolution?
In the state to fund it again? Yeah, to reauthorize it for another ten years.
All right, built in, is that something you can handle?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get you.
Anything else? All right, do I have a mo- motion for adjournment? Oh, I'm sorry.
Quick comment on the special meeting on May thirteen. Initially, I reached out in regards to um. The S R O discussion and what the uh the school district has has done through their discovery of the diligence. That will still happen on the thirteen. We're talking about adding more agenda items onto that meeting, so per ordinance is like. Of those more. Andy, you want to want to?
Yeah, I said we're going to make it a full meeting.
Yeah.
You say that earlier.
Okay, so I just want to mention that.
I love seeing it here in library.
Because our ordinance says especially this corner for one thing and you want to make it bigger.
And and is that, I I don't remember, is it thirteen? The school district at seven, right?
It's at six or five.
Okay, okay, good. I I thought the school district wanted it at seven, so I'll give you stuff ahead of it. But whatever, whatever this is for, yeah, okay, very good. All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
Okay, you have a second. All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, all all the same. Thank you very much.
You're more than fine.
Yeah.
Good job, Jake.